Ellen Mitchell, I'm the chair of the leadership team. And I am here with me, the leadership team, with this is Cal Adams today. He's at an event in his hometown of Coolville, New York. Who knows where Coolville is? I don't know. It's 4000 people today, just in case you're in a pub quiz later. But with me are members of our, members of our leadership team, Amy Parsons, Kate Stoll, Katie McLaughlin, Pastor Emily, Sarah Luther, Amelia Johnson, of course, myself. Everything that the leadership team decides on is based on what our church mission and vision and our core values are. So it's important to share with you our, our mission, which is to make disciples of Jesus Christ for the transformation of the world. Our vision is that we are committed to meeting needs, fostering relationships, pursuing justice, and making space for all to thrive. Let's just review our core values. Preaching and teaching scripture, community, encouragement, fellowship, prayer, and worship. Review our goals for 2022. This is what your leadership team has been striving to do this year. We just, we told them last year that we were thinking of working out putting in place a, a, a new church. We were going to hire a church planter. We have looked at that, we've considered that, and we have decided to table that decision. Now is not the right time. We haven't been up on it, but that is not something that we're working on. We had a goal of touch points of communication with you each month. We have been successful in that. This town hall is one of those touch points. We'll certainly have another town hall near the beginning of next year to tell you about the 2020 goals that we established at our retreat a couple weeks ago. We wanted to call together a building leverage task force, and that has been called together and they have been, and they have a meeting. We wanted to work with the building, a leverage task force, to offer six events at the church throughout the year. While the use of the church has increased by some clubs and some other local groups, we have not achieved that goal of offering six events for the community at the church this year. We continue to look at ways to use this church in ministry and, and make it available to the community. But that is where we are in the goals for this year. I want to give you a, a quick financial update. We're at ninety-seven and a half percent of where we should be for pledges at this point in the year, which is wonderful. See there are pledge amount. This is through the end of September, so this counts as the last Sunday. Donations are very close to their budget. Our asset income from the living memorial fund and the parsonage fund, you can see that it's more than fifty-nine thousand dollars. It budgeted, the budget was low, was based on last year's experience. And also, we did not know when we would sell the parsonage or what we would get for it. So since the parsonage was sold in February, we're able to put that money into the parsonage fund, and that's generating asset income. So we actually have more asset income than we encountered on our budget. Certainly for 2020, we will have a, we'll try to have a more accurate view of what the budget is. I think that looks like a special fund report. The memorial fund money is, is invested in a savings account that hasn't moved much since April. All these numbers that I'll share with you are what, the numbers I told you was April and, and, and what the, what the current balance is. So the parsonage fund was at, it put one hundred and sixty-six thousand plus dollars in the parsonage fund in February, and we've gotten up to one seventy-three thousand plus in, in April. And thanks to the stock market, it's at one forty-eight thousand. We, we, we go to all of us who have the money in the stock market. This should become as no surprise as we're waiting and hoping for a rebound. Green space and damage, it's just at the money market, so you can see that that hasn't moved too much. Robert Baxter Trust is with the United Methodist Frontier Foundation. That's a small investment. That hasn't, that has dropped a bit. Council Designated Fund was at more, was it one thousand dollars plus? It's at twenty-one thousand plus now. Davis Wyatt Fund has not changed since April. Living Memorial Fund was up over a million dollars in April and has dropped down below a million dollars, fourteen dollars, much, much. It has dropped as a result of the stock market. You can see that the mortgage gambling companies, the law is part of that. And that is the business end of our town hall. We'll certainly be sharing updated numbers. We talked to everything here. Thanks very much for coming to participate in our, our vote for, to see if we're going to join the Reconciliative Ministries Network. And I'll turn things over to Pastor.
Thank you so much, Ellen. Before we get into the nuts and bolts of this, can we just take a minute to thank Ellen and the leadership team for their faithful leadership of the church? They're so good. All right. A few just kind of points of introduction and instructions before we move into the voting time. All of you should have by now a ballot card that looks like, a ballot card that looks like this. If you do not have one, please see Tricia right now. All right. Excellent. Your ballot has on top of it a unique number. I don't know which numbers go with which ballots. People counting the ballots in the back office, you don't know which ballots go with which ballots. So this is a way to ensure that everyone gets one vote and only one vote, and no one knows how. This was the brilliance of the team of people that were working on the integrity of this process. The vote itself is to affirm the statement written on the ballot and by so doing, to agree for our congregation to join the Reconciliative Ministries Network. I'm not going to go to great lengths to tell you about that because I've been doing that for several months now on multiple platforms, but I will read to you the language of what you will be affirming if you vote yes. It says, "I hereby support Geneva FUMC's membership in the Reconciliative Ministries Network and affirm the following statement as required of all Reconciliative United Methodist." Quote, "We celebrate God's gift of diversity and value the whole least made possible in community equally shared and shared with by all. We welcome and affirm people of every gender identity, gender expression, and sexual orientation who are also of every age, race, ethnicity, physical and mental ability, level of education, and family structure, and the very economic, immigration, marital, and social status and so much more. We acknowledge that we live in a world of profound social, economic, and political inequities. As followers of Jesus, we commit ourselves to the pursuit of justice and pledge to stand in solidarity with all who are marginalized and oppressed." So the way that this is going to work is in just a moment, I will invite you to bring your ballots forward and set them into the basket on the table there. If you are not physically able to come forward, if walking is a challenge, just raise your hand and then here Phil will come back for you. She's our partner for the day, and she'll bring it to the basket. Once all the votes are in, the basket will go back into the back office, who have a couple of trainee collectors who will be counting the votes and tallying them up. They've already counted the mail-in votes and the votes that will cross the office earlier. So they'll just be counting the ones that will be submitted today and then mapping it out with the ones that were previously submitted. Once the final results have been tallied and verified, the results will be brought to me and I will announce them, and then I can pray, and then we will go home and have our lunches. While we are bringing our votes forward and while we are waiting for the collectors to do their diligence to make sure that the counts are accurate and, and correct, Charity will be leading us in singing several hymns. The lyrics will be on screen, and I've asked Charity to just keep us singing until the final count is done. So that's how this is going to work. So we're not taking questions at this time about joining RMM or anything like that. Is there any confusion about the voting process in and of itself? Check the box, bring your ballot forward, place it in the basket, that's it. All right. Then let us, let us turn now to the presence of God, celebrating the presence of the Lord is in this place. And as we sing, would you bring your ballots forward?
Thank you.
Many thanks to Charity for holding the ship steady while Yanni and I were drawing. So just a reminder, thank you Charity. So just a reminder that in order to join the Reconciling Ministries Network, we need to have approved the recommendation by a seventy-five percent or more majority. By a majority of ninety point two eight percent, you have approved the recommendation. Thank you. You're welcome. Let's pray and then let's have lunch. God love, we thank you for your spirit among us as we celebrate and restore and holy moments. We know that your spirit is moving mightily in this space, and we are so grateful. While so many of us are celebrating this step toward reconciliation, we recognize that for some, celebration is not a feeling. Some may feel sad, angry, or fearful at what they believe to be a step in a dangerous direction for the church. A commitment to inclusiveness includes loving others' well. Regardless of how you feel about the outcome of this world, we know, Holy God, that you are with us. That you are with those who disagree, that you are with those who are frustrated, that we are not doing even more than this to vigorously pursue justice for all people. You are with all of us, O God, and you are the author of our salvation and joy. As we move from this space, help us take this moment as a call to radical love. May we share the love of Jesus with all persons, regardless of who they are, how they live, or what they believe. More so, may we share the love of Jesus with all persons because of who they are, for all are precious in your sight. Creator, Sustainer, and Redeemer, take this moment as a sign of our commitment to meet needs, foster relationships, pursue justice, and make space for all to thrive. We're all in, and we're all in love with you. Thank you, friends, for coming to the town hall with whom you were that far.